So I don't have an issue with it. It just, it should have been here before it's there.
Yeah.
Um, the miscommunication on whatever part is fine.
I really, I really want to emphasize that she had, she was not hiding this or trying to go around the town.
I see the parking lot, I see the pictures. It looks like it's been there and nobody's trying to hide anything, so that's fine. Um, that's what we're here for and happy to help. Um, I do want to get public input.
Sure.
Uh, make sure that it's, you know, it's already been there. So if it is a nuisance, I think the neighbors would know and tell me. So that's, uh, that's our next step is to ask anybody else from the public. If there's anybody to talk on this, whether it's far or against this business. Um, they're asking for permission to have this two-seat hair salon. And apparently it's been running for some time. Is there anybody here who wants to discuss it? Okay. So having not heard from anybody, I just need to read a letter because it's, it came in with our mail. And, um, so I guess because we don't have copies, I'm gonna read it aloud for everybody. It was sent to Laurie Walsh, who is now our secretary handling our affairs. And it says hello, I'm writing in regards to the public reading hearing agenda case 2025. Michelle Mendonka regarding the special permit for a two-person hair salon. I'm unable to attend the hearing on September 16th, but I hope my concerns can be addressed prior to approval of this permit. I am a neighbor of this property and I'm concerned how the traffic will affect the quiet dead-end street of Weldon Lane. As we already know, Middle Road is very busy street in the neighborhood. Children's bus is on the corner. Uh, people tend to park on this street already due to the Weldon Reserve Trail. Also, the town clerk mentioned that this permit Michelle is requesting is for to open a two-chair hair salon. However, on Facebook, in the last several years, she's been promoting renting out a room in this business for other services besides hair, such as waxing. Uh, does this potential permit allow her to have other businesses besides at her location? Does this permit allow other employees or business owners to work for her? This does add a level of concern with multiple business at a multifamily residential home, including business hours, parking concerns, traffic. This location is multifamily unit already, and now the possibility of adding a business seems like a lot of traffic for peaceful, quiet, dead-end residential area. Also, is this business, if this business has not been officially approved to be up and running by the town, yeah? And registered as a business, why has she been promoting her business and seeing clients at this residence for several years? What are the zoning laws and regulations for this home-based business? Does this business permit, once approved, have any special restrictions? Since this permit has not been officially approved yet, why is it open? I appreciate your answers to these questions. I value small business opportunity in town, but fear this business at this location may not follow the regulations of the permit, which can be detrimental to the peaceful residential life of the neighbor, neighboring families, as well as, as well as the increased traffic. Uh, thank you, Courtney Turner. So.
What's Courtney Turner's address, if I might ask? I'm just curious where she was on board.
She's not here and she didn't give it to us.
Okay.
So she says she's a neighbor, she lives on the street. Um, again, the business is an allowed use. It is, I'm looking at the pictures, I see that the parking's okay. I don't disagree with anything she says that it should have been permitted first. And, um, I guess I'd like to ask the questions through you or directly. Um, you're looking for two seats. So if we approve this, we'd be looking at two seats. I'm assuming the owner and one other person would be there cutting hair and stuff. If there are to be more people or waxing bays or this or that, and we're gonna have four or five, uh, employees there, it is a different thing. So I want to make sure you're asking for everything you want, because if we don't approve what you actually want, then you can't do the other things, so.
Yeah, she can speak to that.
I do not have the waxing room anymore. That's gone. I used to do that. I don't do that anymore. That's gone. Um, I do not want to get another chair rent. That's not on, it's just me. I do have two chairs because I work and two clients at the same time.
Okay.
So I do not want another address.
Okay.
And I don't do this full-time. I do this as part-time and it's appointment only. I take at least three, four clients every two to three hours and then I go to my other job. So I don't have that traffic like they're saying it because I take, I don't take a bunch of people at once to have that much traffic.
Can you tell me, um, the earliest you would take a client and the latest you would take a client?
The earliest at nine because I drop my kids off to school. And the latest, I close at six. Sometimes I close at five.
So, so no business after six?
No.
Or seven o'clock, say? And no business before nine o'clock?
No, no. And I do have a lot of family that come over and I think they're kind of confused with family and clients.
Sure.
So I don't have that much clients, the way they're saying that they're disturbing the peace or it's crowded, it's not because I don't have that much clients, no.
I just want to be clear on what the board would be deciding on. You have a salon with two chairs.
Yes.
But you're a one-person operation. You're not gonna have any other employees and your hours of operation would be from nine to six?
Yes. By six is closed.
Anybody who needs any more information? Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we allow the permit.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Hi. Thank you.
You are allowed to have your two chairs, one employee.
Okay.
And if you need to do more, you need to come back, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you just need to see Laurie before you go and get a little bit of paperwork and we'll give you a minute before we start the next case. Okay, our next case, case number 2025-0916B. Case of Meat in the Middle LLC. Map 23, Lot 1, special terms required for a commercial storage office space and contractor yard located within Residence A, RA District per Section 33 dot 3 dot 1 dot B14 of the zoning bylaw. Is there anybody to represent Meat in the Middle?
Yes.
Good evening. Uh, for the record, Steve Biosa with Site Tech Engineering representing the applicant this evening. With me tonight is the applicant, Chris and Janelle Siano. Uh, they live on Morse's Lane, uh, which is actually in the vicinity of this proposed project. Uh, the board may recall, we were before you a little earlier this year with a slightly different proposal. Um, that proposal was withdrawn. It was for a multiple-bay contractor storage facility. Um, and the clients stepped back a little bit, decided to take another look at the property and felt that, uh, they could locate Chris's business here on the property, which would be contractor facility for storage of equipment and supplies, as well as a small office, um, to be created in a new building on the property. Uh, again, for orientation, we're on the southeast side of Middle Road, uh, just opposite Morse's Lane. It's about a 26-acre parcel of land. It's got about 700 or so feet of frontage on Middle Road, so it's a pretty large piece with a lot of buffering area. As we explained at the earlier hearing, we started this project by marking out wetland areas on the site, completing property and topography. And we actually subdivided out a lot, um, which was part of the original parcel. This lot here at 474 Middle Road. We subdivided out the existing house. The previous owner of the property retained ownership of that house and that lot. Um, and then Chris, uh, acquired ownership with Janelle, the remaining land. We had the owner speak with the building commissioner. He suggested that we come back in with a special permit request with the ZBA um, to have this particular use, which would be a storage use, a small office. Um, we're proposing a 5,000-square-foot building. 1,000 square feet would serve as Chris's office space. And then 4,000 square feet would be interior storage and garage space. Um, we've also designated two exterior storage areas on the site. Um, the first area is proposed, uh, in the front of the property here. Um, set back 75 feet from the property line of, um, Middle Road. So about 75 feet from the actual traveled way. Um, buffering that storage area from the public way, we're looking to do a little mounding of the topography, creating a little two-foot mound, planting evergreens on the top of the mound. We've selected Leyland cypress, they grow very rapidly. So we're starting with a four-foot planting with on a two-foot mound. So we're starting with a six-foot buffer. Those trees grow several feet a year. So in very short order, you're gonna have a very dense, uh, visual buffer at the front. Coupled with the fact that we're set back a little bit more than 75 feet from the actual traveled way, we think that creates a nice isolation of the activity from visibility of traffic along, um, Middle Road. The second storage area, uh, we're proposing is behind the building. So we're proposing the 5,000-square-foot building here. That building is actually set about 300 feet, um, off the sideline of Middle Road. And that second storage area is behind the building. So 300 feet brings you to about the beginning of the building. We've got another 100 feet, so now we're 400 feet off the road and then another 20 feet. So a little over 400 feet between Middle Road and that storage area, which would be set aside for some of, uh, the contract equipment uh, that is not put into the garage area. So trucks and other vehicles would be stored inside the garage. Nothing would be stored as far as vehicles in the front. That would be for materials, create some material bins for crushed stone and loam and mulch, those types of materials. Um, and the vehicles would all be essentially 400 feet or so or more away from Middle Road. So we've kind of isolated that portion of the activity on the back of the site. Uh, the operation, uh, basically four to six employees for the facility. They don't all come to the site every day. A lot of times the, um, staff, um, meet at the job site. It's more convenient that way. Uh, but four to six employees. We are proposing some employee parking spaces in front of the building, so no vehicles close to the road. Closest parking to the street, again, is over 300 feet off Middle Road. Buffering the property heading, I guess, to the southwest down Middle Road. Um, there's over 700 feet of either vegetated wetlands, the power lines, quite a bit of undeveloped or untouched space for this particular piece of property. So we think it's well buffered from neighboring properties. Um, there's nothing really surrounding us to the rear. So it is undeveloped land in that, uh, location back there. And, um, hours of operation, I know that's always a question on, on any type of facility. Uh, we're looking to operate the facility, uh, hours of operation, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday. And then some limited hours on Saturday, a potential for 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM on Saturday. No operation on Sunday. Again, the actual trucks would be stored inside the garage. And Chris did take the time to go speak to some of the neighbors and he did solicit a couple of letters of support. Um, and I think he's got copies for the board members. Um, these are either direct the butters or the butters across the street. Um, and you'll see the lengthy, there's one letter that's a little bit lengthy. Uh, that's the person who Chris acquired the land from. And her primary concerns are hours of operation, the things you might expect, um, to make sure we're not creating a nuisance to the neighborhood and we don't think we are. I think it's really low intensity. Most of the time, the equipment is brought to a job site, stays on the job site for the extent of the project. And then at the conclusion of the project, we'll either be brought back to the site or more often than not, just moved to the next project. So there isn't a lot of back and forth with equipment coming to and from the site. It's a very infrequent operation. During the day, you probably see no activity at all on the property unless it's a rainy day and they're working on maintaining equipment in the garage. So that would be an interior activity or Chris is doing paperwork in the office. Um, so we think it's low intensity from a traffic standpoint, traffic management standpoint. We originally, on the, the plan we presented earlier, had two points of access to the site. Uh, we've now condensed that to a single driveway, so we only have one driveway feeding the property. We think that helps consolidate points of conflict with traffic on, um, Middle Road. And, uh, from a traffic standpoint, we don't think that this creates any unusual spike in traffic on a fairly wide and well-traveled road that was built for commercial activity. So I think with the landscape screening in the front and setting the bulk of the facility to the rear, we don't think we're gonna be a nuisance or a detriment to the neighborhood and we hope you'd consider granting a special permit.
Okay. So. In my opinion, looking at the map and looking at anything, my, my biggest concern would be for Caroline Moore and I'd hope she'd be in the audience here today, but I'm guessing she's not since we have a.
You have a letter for.
A big letter here.
Please stay in Florida.
I just got this, so I'm, I'm reading it. Uh, you all have it in front of you. I don't think I need to read the whole thing out loud as we all have a copy. Um, so again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read, I'm not gonna read it, but I'm, I already have while you were speaking and I'm looking at it. And I'm agreeing that this proposal is a lot different than the one you were in here a few months ago. I really like the proposal. It's nice, it's, it's back, it's off. It doesn't really disturb anyone anywhere except for possibly Caroline Moore. She has a, a big letter here redressing some things, um, hours of operation, noise and yada, yada. Um, I'm wondering why or if, um, when we talked about this two-foot mound and the cypress, why we're not kind of wrapping that side as well to buffer her from this?
Even, it's not on the plan, but I believe that is what we intend to do anyway. Just, we can certainly add it.
We could live with that as a condition, obviously, to add the similar mounding and plantings along that property boundary to create a visual.
It's a lot of property.
Right.
At least in the front part. I don't know if there's already natural buffing, I, I'm not.
There is, she's actually contacted us to take some of it down, some of it's dead, so.
I, I don't know what's coming down, what, what's going up, what the, you know. There's no trees here shown except for the ones that you're putting. So I don't know how much buffer you have between her house. Obviously, it's several hundred feet back and that's a good thing. Um, one of the reasons I'm questioning is because she's saying she likes the idea and that it's okay and there's no issue. But she's looking for hours of operation at 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And I know that I can't start working anywhere till 7:00 AM because you, you've got noise restrictions. But I also know that for you to get on a job at 7:00 AM, you've got to be there at 6:00. And you're asking for 6:00. So I'm, I'm looking at it. I'm okay with 6:00, but are you gonna be disturbing her or you're not? Are you gonna plant and have a buffer zone between you and her? That's, seems to me would be the biggest concern is that you're not disturbing that one neighbor. Looks like that's all you have.
Um, there are a couple neighbors, but for the most part, um, she's most definitely the closest. The house, she does not live in there now, she's at Florida primarily. I did reach back out to her. I let her know that I wanted to change it from 7:00 AM to 6:00 AM. She did say she was okay with that. She was not able, she's very difficult to sort of pin down and get a hold of. And everything's through her lawyer, as you can see, that letter was very.
Well written, yeah.
It's through her lawyer, um, but they did, I don't know if we haven't.
Hi, Janelle Siano, Meat in the Middle. Um, I did speak to Nick and I actually thought he would be here today because he said he was to be able to verify that, that that time was okay at the 6:00 AM. And it, he thought that that was a, I have it in a text message. Um, but I didn't think for one second that it wouldn't have been emailed or sent to you guys. So I apologize.
It says here too, she's also looking for a way, if they do sell the property, that whoever purchases it has to come to your board again.
So with anything, with any kind of special permit allowed use, it's not just for the specific owner, but it is for the exact specific use, meaning this same use, these same hours, these same conditions. And so they can pass on that. But it, and it doesn't stop with a change of ownership, but it does stop with any slight change in the use. So you know, you build this building, it's for you to do what you're doing. And you can't turn around and say somebody's gonna come in and open up an automotive business or anything else. It's, it's for what you're asking for and that only. Um, you are asking for hours of 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. It's in record, uh, Saturday, 7:00 to 3:00 and no Sundays. Not gonna be anything coming out of there making noise on them time. I, I do want to ask again, Caroline's not here, we have a long letter. I, I've read through most of it. It's very detailed, um, other than the, the six and seven o'clock thing, which you're telling me she's okay with. Um, gonna take your word for it.
Her, her attorney, Nicholas Gomes. That's what I have on a text message.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak for her? Yes, please. If, if you come up to the podium and state your name and address, it'd be very helpful.
Hi, I'm Gary Sobio. I live 406 Middle Road. I bought up the power lines. Actually, my piece of land was part of the farm.
Okay.
Um, I'm concerned about the sand and gravel, what he's talking about. Um, you know, the noise loading trucks. And the value of my house, my land, um, going down because of.
I don't have you on the map they've given me.
I've been there since 1973.
Can, can you tell me, um, if you pulled out of Morse's Lane, would you be to the right or the left of their property?
I'd be, um, south of their property on the power lines.
Where the high-tension wires are, our house is brown.
If I can point to the plan, this, he's heading in this direction here and, and it's off the drawing here. And just for frame of reference for distances.
So over a thousand feet away?
Well, 700 feet. Here's, here's the frontage number right here, 777. Right, so it's, that would bring you to that boundary line. If you have the common line with him, you're about 600 feet away from any of the activities, separated by a, a buffer of wetlands, the power lines and some wooded, obviously some pretty extensive wooded area there.
I'm concerned about the noise of, you know, the trucks loading gravel. But evidently, if you've got sand and gravel, they're gonna be loading and you've got backup beepers on their trucks. I can hear that all the way from, um, Vine Pavilion. I can hear beeping from them loading trucks out there. If I can hear it over there, I'm sure I'm gonna be able to hear all that noise there. And that would be a concern for me. And if I go to sell my property, I'm sure the value is gonna be less.
Okay.
And, I would say.
Thank you. Anyone else got any information to add, one way or the other, for redance? Any more butters? Anything more from the petitioner?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman.
I don't know, I, I do, I do like the use of this a lot better than when you came with us before us months ago, where you were talking about four different renters and all that. And I, I just couldn't get on board because I didn't see how you could possibly control the comings and goings, the hours, the whatever. Um, but if it's your people.
Uh, to Chris, I guess. How many trucks do you have? Like, how much equipment do you have?
Um, we have three, four trucks, two of which stay with my guys, if you will. They don't come from USA. They, they've taken them over.
Right.
Um, so typically.
Not heavy trucks, these are trucks that drive.
Certainly.
Yeah, so this is not gonna be.
And we have one six-wheel dump truck.
Okay.
Um, we don't run, I should say we don't run because let's say we get a delivery of sand or stone. It'll show up on a 10-wheeler or a dump trailer.
Correct.
I don't own 10-wheeler's and dump trailers. I have one-ton trucks and I have one six-wheel truck.
Okay, so small.
I don't want to say we'll never own one, but if we own one, it will be one. It won't be a fleet of them.
Yeah. I mean, I know he's talking about with the stone place, Pico or whatever it is. Michael Pico, however you say it.
Yeah.
But he's got, he's got a full-fledged stone.
Well, they, they.
Business that's cranking in and out.
They do material, that's what they do. We do excavation work.
Right.
So typically, we go to a job in the morning. Couple employees show up, grab a truck, maybe grab five or six yards of material, go to the job.
For the purpose of this special permit, um, your parking is laid out, your building's laid out, you've got some stuff. Um, but you don't have, you're not asking for a number of trucks. And, um, to put trucks on your property, the town allows one commercial truck, one whatever. So I think you should probably give us a number of how many trucks would be parked on this property.
Whatever can be in the garage and not parked on the, it's a, was it four or three?
You've got a four-stall, it's looking like.
Okay.
I see four overhead doors.
Yeah, we have four overhead doors.
Can we limit it to four trucks?
Of course.
One per bay and then they'll always be, I'm kind of a clean freak, so I don't want stuff.
So what you're telling me is there's not gonna be any trucks parked outdoors? So what you're telling me is there's not gonna be any trucks parked outdoors?
If there is, it'll be my personal truck doing paperwork or something like that, but...
I don't mean during the course of the day, I'm talking hours.
No, everything goes away at night, every night. That's how we operate.
I hear the gentleman talking about the backup beeps and the this and the that. The one thing I'll say to that is between the hours of 7:00 and 7:00, that's allowed right on the street, right in front of this house and anywhere else. So if we're not looking at running a business with 50 trucks, and we're not gonna be doing business after hours or before hours, I think it's kind of a non-issue. If we're not gonna be having more than four trucks, again, I think for this size property and everything, it's, again, kind of a non-issue. My big issue would be to make sure that the budding neighbor who's only 15 feet from your driveway, or her property, not her home, but her property's only 15 feet, not the one 700 or 800 feet away, but that there is some kind of buffer there. So I would ask that it be put into record that the same Cypress set that's put on the front of the property come down some extent as a buffer or some other type of buffer between there. Is that agreeable? Is that something?
So the house, if I can check there, obviously, the property is two seven, that's a football field, that's a long way. But her house is right up front.
Yep.
So I wouldn't know if it would have to go a little length, but maybe just to block the house.
We plan to do an L shape, which is, it'll probably end up being about 150 feet, 75 feet across the side of the garage, and then another 75 feet up the main entrance with something.
I don't want to dictate exactly what you do. I just want to know that there's gonna be some type of...
We can certainly agree of putting something as a buffer, 100%.
So we, we have, yeah, but we do have, we do have information. I want it all in record that there will be a buffer between the neighbor, there will be a buffer between Middle Road. Hours of operation are 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Saturday. Watch that curve. And zero business operation on Sunday. That's what we're talking about here. A contractor yard that's owned by the owner, not leased project, but something that the owner is running himself and has full control over. And I don't know that I have much else to offer, but that's...
Is that existing fence?
Is that an existing fence?
Can you answer the question about this P&amp;R fence? Is that something that's existing?
It's existing, yes. So the surveyors picked that up when they did the survey, and obviously will be taking the section down that's on the applicant's property.
More property.
Just something that's in the picture and has nothing to do with it.
It's the one that everyone knows to turn to more support.
I think those, those special permit with those...
Give me one second. I just want to know if anybody else has any input, one way, for, against, or otherwise on this project? Sorry, Chuck?
I was gonna say, no, just kidding. I'm gonna make a motion to accept a special permit with those agreed terms.
I second that.
There's a motion and a second. The terms they're speaking to is basically a...
Buffer.
A buffer between you and the neighbor, hours of operation, 6:00 a.m., 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, 7:00 to 3:00 on Saturday, and no Sundays. If them are agreeable to everyone, this motion is a second. All in favor? So moved.
Very good. Thank you.
Good luck. Nice job.
They're just wrapping up a little bit of paperwork with signatures over here, and we'll start on the next case in one moment.
Have a good night.
Our third and final case this evening, case number 2025, point 09, point 16C. The case of Cheryl Kazmier, a property located at Toby Street. Lot 2, block 35 dot 47. On May 30th, 2007, lot 47 was reduced to a non-buildable lot due to wetlands. variance is required pursuant to 3.31E1 minimum lot area and upland requirements. That is looking to change the lot 47 to buildable. Is there someone representing that?
That's me.
Hello.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Kazmier. I'm representing my mom, actually. She's 90, so she could not be here. So it's my family and my mother who owns the property. It was a subdivision that was built by my dad. He built 38 homes in that whole neighborhood. That's the original plan. It shows all the, these are the two lots that he saved for himself, hoping that he would build a retirement home someday, which he never had a chance to do. All the other houses have pretty much the same size lots. We're not looking to do anything with the right-hand side lot. When you come down the street, it's the left-hand side lot 47. Combined, we have .94 acres with the two lots, and we have 298 feet of frontage and the whole entire cul-de-sac. Again, the actual lot we're looking at is, it has 149.5 feet of frontage, and it has 20,000, just over 20,000 square feet. Do you have the, all the information that I submitted?
I don't have anything in regards to a map or a plan like you have in front of you.
I gave you all packets. It was nine packets. I've had the land, I've had the lot flagged by Steve.
Okay.
So I have...
Take the paper.
There they are.
This?
I had the lot.
I've seen this somewhere.
Yes.
So these are supposed to be on the board.
Oh, they do have these now.
I thought I saw something like this.
Yeah, it's got an M, it's got a...
So Toby Street.
All right. Yeah, the north side of the ride, cul-de-sac. There's nothing on that cul-de-sac right now.
Right, we own two lots on both sides. I had it flagged by Steve Schmuel. He went out there and he flagged all of the wetlands. I've had John Rominelli, who went out and did all the engineering for me. He proposed a nice, small retirement home that would fit nicely into the neighborhood of similar houses that my dad built. I'm not looking to put anything huge. I'm looking for a nice, small 24 by 36 kate.
I guess my biggest question would be, and again, according to, I don't know if it's according to your application, according to my minutes or my sheet, it says that... Did I just read that? I've read something about a date and time that it was, somebody asked for it to be a non-buildable lot.
No, it was put into, as, they were buildable lots. 1992, when my father took over the deed, as those two lots, they were buildable lots. He built, let's say, the whole neighborhood, and as time goes on, the zoning changed, the lot sizes changed, so therefore they became non-buildable. And then they were combined by the town. There used to be two separate lots, and they were combined to one lot for tax purposes.
Let me, I know this.
As I say, it was the town that combined them.
I saw it in here a minute ago, and my issue was that for the past, I don't know, 15-plus years, this property's been valued at $4,000. that in itself means that everybody knew it was non-buildable and didn't want to build on it and didn't want to pursue it. I mean...
It was pursued by my father in the year 2000, and it was turned down.
Looking for something I don't see up on here.
So now both lots are combined, and it's a total of how much square foot total?
It's a total of 40,777 square feet.
Were you looking for a lot to get taxed?
I saw the tax thing somewhere, and I just read something else that said at a certain date it was deemed non-buildable. I guess part of the issue is, for the past 15 years, when it was only taxed at $4,000, everybody was fine with it. But now you want to build on it, so it basically should have been taxed at 100-plus thousand for the past 15 years. So there's a lot of money that is owed back or not based one way or the other.
The town deemed it non-buildable. It wasn't...
But it was agreed on or not.
It wasn't agreed on.
It wasn't agreed on.
The laws changed as far as the lot sizes went, and the town, that's what they do, they combine where it has adjacent lots.
I guess my problem is, if I've got a lot, and I think I have a lot, and I'm told I don't have a lot, and then I accept the fact that I don't have a lot and the bill's only $4,000, I, I, or not the bill, but the assessment is $4,000. Everybody knows if it was a buildable lot, the value would be 150,000, 200,000, not 4,000.
It would have been built on a long time ago, and it would have been a house paying taxes. And it will be a house paying taxes to the town from here on out. And, you know, with the Affordable Home Act, where they're trying to make new, you know, more affordable housing and make un-buildable lots buildable again.
And they are. And what's the exact square? What did you give?
The law itself has 20,000.
When they combined them, they considered one now, so now it's 40,000.
But the opposite side of the street, right, we have 40,777 square feet, just shy of acre.
So you def, and when, I think I read the town combined them in 2000?
Something like that, yes.
So I agree that the new law says that we didn't have the right to combine them, and that you can come back, and as long as you have more than 10,000, and it was registered prior, that you can uncombine and make a lot.
Date of purchase was August 3rd, 1978.
The lot you're going to be building on is 20,000?
388.
Didn't you say that you own land that adjoins this property?
It's adjacent. We own the opposite side cul-de-sac.
So it's map 2, lot 35?
Correct.
It doesn't really adjoin because it cuts right across the cul-de-sac, and there's no, wherever it adjoins, it's a sliver, there's nothing there.
I don't know for sure that that's been determined. I'm confused about that, only because they joined the lots.
This map, 2, lot 3A, that's behind all of it? Is there a home there?
No. It's woods, it's woods. It's all woods. I think that's all.
And do you own that as well? No?
All of it's woods right now, around the whole cul-de-sac. It's just a blank cul-de-sac. It's there.
The cul-de-sac is in place, frontage is in place.
The town water, town sewer is all there, electricity, it's all there.
It's all there, water, sewer.
Town water, town sewer, 20,000 square feet, that meets all the requirements and that stuff. It's supposed to be 10 is the minimum. We just turned down some for eight and seven, but nothing but 20.
You want to hear any other?
I do. Is there anybody speaking for or against this? Please, please take the podium.
So in 2000, we went to the meetings for conservation for the property. The property's across the street from each other.
Yeah, do you just need name and your address, please?
Oh, Paul Silo, 898 Toby Street, Krishnan.
Okay. Where's 898 compared to the cul-de-sac?
It's right across the street.
So you map?
And those two properties are separated.
So you lot 40 or 34? You're on the side where she's proposing?
Right across the street, the last one.
On the other side?
Yeah.
Okay. Lot 34, okay. Just want to get a view of it all. Go ahead.
So they had, they put this before conservation, and there was two meetings. The first meeting, they decided to do a walkthrough on the property, and they found that the wetlands were flagged wrong. They were flagged on the bottom. They should have been flagged on the top. I'm not an engineer. I'm just, I have the recording from back then, so I went through it all. There was a lot of concerns with the setback requirements on the property. The wetlands, there's a river at the bottom of the street, so they're worried about the Rivers Act. And pretty much they deemed it at that point that it was, it was not a buildable lot. Property was deemed non-buildable. And that was in 2001, 2000, and then it looks like in 2007 again, according to the papers, it was, I don't know if they went before someone else after that, but we were at those two meetings and we recorded them both.
And where the brick is, it's all conservation, and it's all conservation.
But right now, you have to meet the current wetland standard, so we don't really do that.
I just think in the same thing.
It isn't a...
We can say that that lot's not adjoined with another lot, but you still have to meet whatever conservation says is your upland and whatnot, so it sounds like to me, because of the wetlands, because of whatever, it was deemed non-buildable. And I don't know that that's changed, to be honest, because you still need so much uplands.
Then he tried to shift it to the left, and then it only had 15 feet of front, and it was just a basic ranch that they were trying to prove. So I don't know what the drawings are showing now.
Well, we have...
It was ranch.
149,000.
I have the tape.
I had it read.
Not the frontage, not the frontage to the street.
They're 7 feet.
Because of the base, to the back.
I have all the setbacks and everything, the engineers, the engineers.
One person at a time, if you would, please.
I understand that, but that was back then.
One person at a time, please. I'm just, I gotta look back at what Andy's saying. Yeah, Sam, he's not complying. If the issue, if the issue was the town joined two lots because of the subdivision act, we can undo that because, and I don't even know that we have to. I think the state did that for us. But the problem is, it sounds like this is non-buildable because you don't have enough upland. You don't have enough outer wetlands.
Again, if you look at that plan from John Rominelli, his, all the setbacks are there. He's got everything figured out.
I don't have that.
But not specifically changed in the property, the housing had changed.
It's a small...
I don't understand your opposition to it. Why are you opposing building another house now?
Because of the wetlands.
But what is that? And it doesn't...
Because that's where we live. It's our property. We have the right to.
But that's not your property. These are our property. These are our lands, and we have the right to fight.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you this.
Mr. Plant, yes, that's my grandfather.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you this. I don't have nearly enough information to make a decision on this. If this is what you're giving me to prove uplands, it's not enough. If John Rominelli went there and he stamped a real picture, engineer, and you have it that says there's over, you know, 10,000 square feet of uplands or over whatever, I can look at it, but...
I'm pretty sure he has this one. You have this one as well, correct?
I do.
Okay.
That...
That was all of the engineering that John Rominelli did, with all the markings of all setbacks, everything with where the wetlands are.
It doesn't give me any information about how much uplands you have. It doesn't say it there, and it's not a stamp drawing.
I agree. Now, he was supposed to come with me tonight, but he was on...
That's what I need.
Yeah, but he was going, as I said, he was supposed to come, and then he went on to his venue today. He wasn't with me back in Congress. He asked if we could...
I do. I would love to continue it if you want to.
Yes, I do.
Because if an engineer comes in and tells me that the wetland lines have changed, and there's over 10,000 square foot uplands, and this and that and the other, I'd be happy to listen to you. But I'm not seeing that in any of the documentation I have.
That's fine. I'm here to find out what I need to do, what more I need to do.
Yeah, I, we need a engineer drawing showing uplands down there. But it needs to be, it needs to say that there's, I believe it's 10,000 square feet. I gotta do a little bit more research on that, because this is new. We have all these bylaws that generally go to... We have all these bylaws that generally go to the planning board to say whether a lot's buildable or not, and how much you need. When you come here, it's because you're a little bit sharp. I don't know if that's what you're asking for. If you're supposed to have ten thousand, and you have nine hundred ninety-nine, and I'm giving you a foot, that's what I need to know. I, I don't have any information that tells me if you're looking for a variance, if you're looking for how many square feet variance, any of that. It just says that this lot was deemed non-buildable, and you want us to overturn it. I don't have anything in front of me that tells me why it should be overturned.
I'm just basically, John Romanelli felt that it was a buildable lot.
I really need him to provide me a bigger drawing or presentation telling me why. And I'm not saying that you can't do it, but I need him explain it to you, so you can explain it to me.
I, I would rather just bring him with me. As I said, he was supposed to come this evening, but he couldn't come.
If you ask, I'm sure the board will continue this to the next meeting.
Okay, I would like to continue it to the next meeting.
Is there a motion?
I'm making a motion to continue.
Is there a second? All in favor? So moved, we'll, we'll see you in October.
Thank you.
Happy to look at it a little more in detail, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So before we move on, we did discuss the mail, now that, we do have our next meeting set in stone, which these people are, are continuing to, October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five, six thirty, right back here in the room. Is there any other business you gentlemen need to discuss this evening? There is a motion to adjourn?
Second.
There is a second, all those in favor? So moved, we are adjourned. Thank you.